Let's see, Thursday, April eighteenth, two thousand nine at nine forty-five a.m. And I'd like to start with item one, which is the consideration of approval of the minutes from March fourteenth of two thousand nineteen.
I reviewed the minutes, Mr. Chair, and I'll make a recommendation that we approve the minutes in the March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
All right, so moved. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. All right, let the record show that Commissioners Kula, Olson, and Sterrett have approved the minutes for March fourteenth. Second item business is consideration of the adoption of the two thousand nineteen Yamhill County Transit Americans with Disabilities Plan.
Want to see if she wants to up her hand?
Cynthia, would you like to say anything?
Probably not, but she will. Will, yeah.
Would you like to add anything or clarify?
I'll just reiterate what you probably already know, but we just completed the onsite audit. Well, they don't like to call it an audit, but it was sent.
That's what it is.
Technical advisory, yeah. Unless you did something really wrong, then it's not. So, they didn't, they were fine with the ADA plan, and they didn't have us, they didn't suggest any changes. The one thing they did related to ADA was suggest some additional language that we include in our brochures. So, so that's really about the only ADA-related change that, well, in the customer conduct order, they want us to change that, and that was related to ADA, and we can talk about that in more detail later. But they were happy with the plan, they thought it covered all the bases, so I think we're good.
I have a question. Cynthia, do you remember we talked about that if somebody did have an incident or an issue that, that, that a driver or dispatcher, somebody knew who to call, and who do we have listed for them to call? Northwest seniors?
If it's an ADA-related complaint, is that what you mean? Or any complaint?
No, but you know how we had an incident that I brought to your attention about the person who was having an issue? And we talked about having someone, because there was nobody to care for this person.
Oh, a safety check type of thing.
Sort of like, what happens when there's an incident? Where does this person go once they get off the bus? If there's, so do we have perhaps Northwest seniors or somebody kind of, that we have on standby to call if we have one of those types of incidents again?
We have it in the sense that if Renee or I hear about it, that's who we contact. But we don't have it in writing, and maybe we, should we have it? We could add that into, like, we have comment cards or form, all the various documents that we have that are for the customers, whether on the website or in print. But I don't know if that's really necessary. What our process is right now is if we hear about anything like that, then that, I contact some, I contact, usually I start with Christie at Northwest Senior Disability Services. And then she's referred me to the right, or she's just handled it. Because I had two situations like that. There was somebody in Carlton that we wanted to make sure everything was okay, and then there was another person, and so they followed up, and then I just asked them to get me information, if there was anything I needed to know that related to transportation.
It seems to me that that might not be a bad idea to have in the written policies, because, you know, depend on who's there, I like to see the written. And Cynthia, my other question go along with what Commissioner Sterrett says, when we kind, let's say you or Renee or anything gets in your contact, you hear about your contact Northwest Seniors and Disability Services. Is there any period of time, is it within twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, six hours, eight hours?
They have a process at their, whenever they're doing, like, I think they call it a safety check or something. They, I think they do it within twenty-four, but it's their policy, not.
Right, but how, what's our policy? When we find, when we have one of those instances, like the two that you and Mary have talked about.
Now, we don't have a policy. We did it right away, within hours of hearing about it. So, it wouldn't hurt to put that, maybe what we could do is we have our complaint and comment, and, you know, any, any kind of input we get, we keep a log. One of the things they suggested, which I think is a really good idea, is in our log we put in, like, whatever the, you know, whatever the comment is, suggestion, and a resolution area. And in that, they said sometimes someone might call, and let's say they have a complaint, that they're not going to call it a Title VI complaint or an ADA complaint, because they don't even know what that means. But we have to make an assessment of whatever that complaint is, does it fall into that area? And then we should follow the exact same procedure we would follow if it were filed as an ADA complaint. So, that, that was a good input from them, and I thought, well, what we'll do is we'll just, we'll kind of like, we could, we could actually create, we don't really have policies around how we handle, we just, we have told you how we do it, and we keep a process, we don't really, but we could create sort of like some internal policies about that. I don't know that it should really be in the ADA plan. Probably would be better to be sort of just, this is our practice and our procedures.
Yeah, I don't see it as an ADA plan.
I want to be careful, because we're kind of navigating back in, you know, because if it's an ADA plan, and with the requirements under ADA, in our own county policy, we do have a grievance and required response, you know, we have responsibilities under ADA in how we handle complaints, investigate complaints, and respond to those. But it sounds like this, you know.
This is more of a general, it's not an ADA.
Correct.
It's not an ADA issue.
So, I just.
No, that's.
Because we've been kind of weaving back and forth, and I just want to clear it on the record that any ADA complaints that we have, we do have existing county policy, and we also have a requirements under ADA to follow up on ADA grievances and complaints.
And since our transit area is a, since the transit area is a county transit area, then just like any other customer with anything else, we're required to follow the ADA.
And they were happy with all of our processes and our complaint. The one, two things that we're going to do is we're going to translate into Spanish a couple documents that we didn't have translated into Spanish. But other than that, I think they were pleased with all the process and everything else. But to do an internal process for what you're talking about, it's kind of separate from ADA, I think that's a really good suggestion.
Okay. Thanks, Cynthia. Go ahead. No, I don't have any.
Okay. I'm just moving it back to you. Well, then, thank you, Cynthia. Maybe we'll keep you up here for item number three, too, just in case. But can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the two thousand nineteen Yamhill County Transit Americans with Disabilities Plan.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same sign, opposed? All right, let the record show that Commissioners Olson, Kula, and Sterrett approved the consideration of the adoption of the two thousand nineteen, we've adopted the two thousand nineteen Yamhill County Transit Americans with Disabilities Plan. Item number three, consideration to authorize a free transit day on May twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, for the Community Connect event. Want to hear anything?
The only thing I would add to that is just that it's, we've been doing this for at least three years, I think, and they've been very pleased, and they, they, we actually kept track of ridership, and it was, they indicated, I think in the memo I wrote, that a lot of the folks wouldn't have even gone to their event if they wouldn't have had the free ride, so that was, that was good news.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great permit one day.
It's great, that's two things. It gets more people associated with transit, and it gets people to give me.
Well, and I think plus it honors somebody, basically the whole thing was to honor somebody that gave a lot of their time and effort to mark, gave a lot of his time and effort to transit.
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions for Cynthia?
No.
Okay. Well, you need a motion to approve item number three?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, let the record show that Commissioners Olson, Kula, and Sterrett approved item number three. Item number four, other business.
I would mention one thing about the onsite review. They, not, you, none of you were at the exit meeting, so I will email you a copy. They did a summary of the findings, and actually it was really very good, much better than last time. We just had to.
I hope so.
Kind of minor, minor things that we need to resolve. And so I'll just get you a copy, and if you have any questions, feel free to get ahold of me. They will be sending us a much more in-depth report. This is just like a two-page document they gave us yesterday that just highlights the different areas. And then the, when they send us the follow-up document, then we have sixty days to resolve all the issues once we get that document. So, that's where we're at with that, and I think it was, they were very complimentary, one thing that would be good to know, they were very complimentary of the preventive maintenance, that they went out to the shop, so that was, that was good for first transit, and they were happy, it was a hundred percent, which they said they've never seen, so that was good. Compared to last time, which I don't remember, but.
And also they highlighted no repeat findings.
No repeat findings.
That's good.
So, it was all.
Congratulations.
Not that they were findings, they were recommendations. It's not an audit.
Congratulations.
They're not even going to call them that next time, I guess, so that, I don't know. It's interesting.
Okay. Thanks, Cynthia.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Well, there's another, no other business. I think we can close the meeting in the Yamhill County Transit Area Board of Directors.
April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the formal meeting of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. It's now, it looks like about ten oh one, so we'll go ahead and start our meeting. First thing in our meeting is public comment, and this period is received for public comment on any topic other than one. If it's an agenda item, we ask that you wait until that agenda item. We cannot talk about a coincidental land use matter or a topic scheduled for a public hearing. And of course, I might, may decide to limit your test, testimony if needed.
Commissioner, flag salute.
Flag salute. Okay, Christian, will you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Christian. So, that being said, I do ask you also, if you have a cell phone, that you mute the cell phone, if you have to make any calls or receive or send any texts that you go out in the hall, to do it, please, for the respect of the others in the, others in the audience. Okay, right now, it looks like we have three requests to make general comments, so the first one is Jennifer Redmond Noble. So, Jennifer, come on up front, please, and again state your name and your address for the digital record, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Redmond Noble. I live at thirteen five hundred Southwest Peavine Road, McMinnville, Oregon. And I am here as a member of your Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And I am here because I think our, I've been a member for, I'm not sure just how long, honestly, probably about fifteen to twenty years on that committee, and I feel like our committee at this point has lost its citizen advisory and has become an industry advisory committee. Currently, we have five members on the SWAC. Normally, we would have seven, but two of our slots are vacant. Two of those members are industry members, and a third member, Joe Cook, was just a few years ago on as an industry member, and is a very strong industry, really representative on the, even though he is considered a citizen. I am on as a, as a neighbor of the landfill, and through the last seven to ten years, the way it was structured, we lost everyone besides myself who was at all anti landfill, anti riverbank, not anti landfill necessarily, but felt that riverbank was possibly not the right place for garbage today. And people were taken off without their knowledge, they weren't told their positions were coming up for renewal, and then they were put back on with obvious people who had ties to industry people. And people who voted one hundred percent, waited to see, how did the industry vote? That's how they voted every time. That's how our committee unfortunately has come to be run the last few years. And so I really would like this to become a citizen advisory again. I think right now, the way the makeup of the committee is, we're probably not even able to, I mean, if we have to vote on the new bylaws to change this, it will never happen because nothing gets passed today that is not completely one hundred percent what the industry wants, because that's what's on our board. So, I would like to see the industry representatives to become non-voting members of our party. I would like them there, we need their information, we need their input. I don't feel that they should be voting on a citizen advisory, and during yesterday's topic and the last two meetings, the industry representative for waste management has said, we do not want to have anyone from the Stop the Dump Committee ever allowed to be on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, because they are clearly anti landfill. And I brought up to him, and I said, well, you're clearly one hundred percent pro landfill, and you're actually voting your paycheck. So, why is that a conflict of interest? But you having a voting membership is not a conflict of interest, as well as the ecology, who, you know, their, their paychecks right there, they're just, they're voting their paychecks that day on the line. And I do feel like that is, in almost whatever we do, a conflict of interest. I think having them serve as chair and co-chair is also inappropriate for the committee. When we have public come in to talk about a problem they have with a solid waste issue, I don't think they should have to be addressing the person they have the issue with as the person helping them solve that problem in our county. So, I, I feel going forward, I think the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, we have a lot of people in this county who, who have passions different ways. Some of them are pro, sometimes anti, many of them are just trying to find a better garbage stream for our garbage, and people who've actually studied garbage. I asked everyone who is running for the positions, you know, what is your connection to solid waste, and what do you have to bring to the committee? And some people had really strong reasons for what they think going forward, they think that we, you know, how we need to do things, and they have some good ideas. Obviously, we're not a decision-making, we're a recommendation for you guys. But I think right now, today, you might as well just have waste management and ecology come in and give you the recommendation, because that's what you're getting, that's what's coming from the board today, from the committee today. So, I'm hoping going forward that we could make this seven citizens on the board, and then have the two members of the industry there, but not have them be voting members.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
So, when we have openings, so there are, there are two openings right now.
There are two openings.
So, do, because I know we just went through this with, with budget committee. So, in this particular case, because I, when I was liaison, I would come to the meetings, and so it's, seems like it's a little different now in terms of vacancies, because I don't think there were, were any vacancies when I was coming.
Just in the last, like, eight to ten months, these people haven't showed up for a meeting for a year, and then they finally said that they just could not serve any longer?
So, because there weren't any, I don't remember any, when I was coming to them. But at this particular juncture, what do we have to do to make sure that we're at least letting people know? Is it, is the problem that we don't have people interested in it?
No, we have five people right now who have asked to be on solid waste, and for the first time, they've actually asked our committee to look at that, which is kind of interesting, because the committee right now is so heavy industry, because there's only five of us, and three people vote industry always, and, and so they, we've never been, we've never made decisions about who will serve on the committee before as a committee. Used to be, I don't know who exactly decided, I think they brought the names to you guys, perhaps in the past, and you would decide who would be the best to serve it. But there are five candidates who would like to fill those two positions, and I would like to see it become four positions open, and change the industry representatives to informational people, so that you guys are truly getting a citizen advisory when it's, when it's brought to you.
So, I'm not understanding why we're not, why we don't have names coming before us to consider.
They gave us the five names yesterday, and we looked at them, and they did vote two names down there, down the line that they wanted to vote. There was, there was one person who was a good friend of one of the industry guys, and of course, he was put forward to become a member, someone who I felt had no background or interest particularly in solid waste, but, you know, that's, that's kind of where they're going. And if we keep that, and we keep Joe Cook on there as an industry, and the two industry representatives, that puts four industry people basically on our committee of seven. So.
Mary, Commissioner, to answer your questions, as the ex-leazons to solid waste and attending all the meetings, that about a year ago or nine months ago, I talked to Ken Friday in that time about reconstituting and redoing, reviewing all the bylaws, reviewing the membership, reviewing, I've talked to him about twice since then, and Ashley was going to be working on it, and as far as I know, as of today, there's been no work done on new bylaws, how we appoint people, who, like Jennifer said, you know, who sits, and, because I'm a firm believer, industry people should sit on the committee, but they should not be voting members of the committee. And this is for the last, at least since I've been a commissioner, I think the solid waste is one of those that really, the whole, the bylaws, the committee, everything needs to be reconstituted, so.
So, then maybe we could just take a look at that.
I think the whole thing needs to be, from bylaws to appointments to advertising for appointments, I think it's a committee that's definitely in need to have some work, work done. And our role as commissioners, I mean, if we find it necessary, I would probably, and I probably hear from the industry representatives a lot on this, I would probably, if it was me, I would disband the committee the way it is now, do new bylaws, and put out new terms, figure stagger the terms, and have a whole new, have an application process for all members of the committee.
Well, I think we have to have a greater discussion about that.
I do, but I think, because it's, it's a committee that's not really functioning.
And just a reminder, it is tied to statute as well.
Yes.
And Ashley is doing a great job. She really has been working a little bit.
Right.
But she's also asked us, what do you guys think the bylaw should be, and maybe you should send a recommendation to the commissioners. And I'm telling you, the industry has already put forward what they think the bylaw should be. They've already emailed us all. She emailed us several different counties' bylaws, so we have got some information.
Yeah, I look at Marion County.
But I think, once you send it to our committee, there's just too much waiting, going to be that way, and it's just going to come back whatever the industry would like it to be.
Yeah, I think we do have to have more discussions on that.
Yeah, I believe that the statute that it's tied to does say that it includes industry representatives.
But it doesn't.
It doesn't specify whether they're voting.
Voting or not.
And our current bylaws specify that they're voting, but that they need to, they recuse themselves as, as a conflict presents.
Sometimes, but sometimes, because they have at the, in the past.
Well, and they rarely recuse themselves on anything, and really, it's very few things that come before us that aren't a conflict of interest for them.
But the comments Jennifer talked about, what she heard yesterday in the meeting, I've, several of the meetings, I've heard that exact same comment from the industry representatives, that same comment about not wanting some of the citizens, some of the people in the neighborhood, or some of the people for Stop the Dump on there, because they were in there only to, in opposition to the, to the landfill, and I've, I've heard that comment several times, so.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Can I ask one more clarification?
Yes.
I'm trying to remember the bylaws, it's a short, the existing bylaws are pretty short.
Yeah, they're very short, they're not very specific.
Okay, it doesn't say, it doesn't lay out the process then for how SWAC members are appointed, or?
I think it says appointed by the commissioners. I think it says, I think that's what it says.
Yes.
Because they're asking us right now to recommend to you guys, you know, who do we want on the committee, and I, I don't feel like there's a equitable way to do that right now.
Right, and I've noticed that it's, it's different from committee to committee, but it's never, it hasn't been totally clear to me, because I haven't read the bylaws of every committee very, as, like, clearly as I should.
Oh, sure, you guys have a lot of committees.
Whether it's because of the bylaws that we're getting recommendations, or whether it's because.
Right.
No, you are correct. It is different.
And other counties do have them as non-voting.
Yeah.
They're advisory to the Board of Commissioners, so, again, if you have a recommendation that comes forward, it's up to the board, you know, if you wanted to go with that recommendation, or if you looked at all the other applicants, and if you went a different direction, it's really the, it's up to the board.
Okay.
Right.
Ashley is doing a great, a great job. We really appreciate her.
She has done a lot for the, for the solid waste.
Listening to everyone.
And I appreciate reading up those bylaws.
Yes.
I think the one from Marion County is one that I looked at.
Yeah, and then, like, we also looked at Benton County, and they definitely have their industry people as non-voting in Benton County, and different, different makeups, a little bit on each, each board.
Yeah, and I really appreciate, I was, I was telling Jennifer in private, but I really appreciate your willingness to continue asking questions in a really careful and considered way.
Okay, since this is a general, thank you, Jennifer, since this is a general comment section, let's go ahead and move on. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
The next one I have is Margaret Cross, so Margaret, come on forward again. You know, you know the, you know the routine.
Yes, I know the routine. I'll get right to it, although it's going to be tough to, to say more than Jennifer has. Margaret Cross, one one zero two Southwest Russ Lane, McMinnville. I too am here about SWAC. I attended the meeting yesterday, and I am so pleased with Jennifer, who had the courage to come forward and lay out the problems so rationally, and so carefully, and, and dispassionately. I will disqualify myself from dispassionate. I went home and ranted and raved last night, because I was very upset with exactly what she described, this self-waving, this containment, you know, when you, you sit there and you hear passionate citizens, and I, and I know this is weird, I'm going to just say, people say, oh, you're retired, you know, do you golf, do you go on cruises, do you play bridge? I say, no, I do garbage. That's what I do. I, I, I don't know why, but I'm really interested in this. And I will tell you, I'm a member of the Stop the Dump. That does not mean I want to drop a bomb on the landfill. It is there, we have to deal with it. But the broader vision is a changing paradigm worldwide of how we deal with solid waste. It's a form of energy. It can be converted to different kinds of energy. There are different ways to deal with it that don't impact the environment so badly. It's sort of like comparing buggy makers resisting the advent of cars. You do something one way for a long time, it's real hard to make changes. But I will tell you that there is not a member of Stop the Dump that is, their, their interest is in that changing paradigm of exploring alternatives. So, when I sat there yesterday, and I heard Nick Godfrey, who's vice chairman, say explicitly, I don't want those three people, because I am uncomfortable with the opposition serving on this committee. This is a serious problem. I went back and I checked the statute, and I brought it for you to spare you the effort, but this committee is charged under statute with providing a forum for citizen comments, questions, and concerns, promoting a dialogue. It's supposed to be citizens with their concerns, their ideas, their possibilities. When you have a board that's, that's structured to protect two franchisees, you're depriving yourself and the citizens of Yamhill County with the opportunity for new possibilities, things that might save you money, things that might be better for the citizenry. And that's what we're asking for, is change this. So, I have a couple concrete suggestions, rather than just yelling at you all the time. First, you're going to get two names from SWAC for appointees. I would suggest you ask Ashley for the applications of all five of the applicants, and you consider them. Call them in for interviews if you need to. Some are better than others, I'm not going to say who I like, but I'm just saying, some were way more qualified than others to serve on this. And I think you owe it to yourselves and to the citizens to look at all five applications. Secondly, you do need to move forward with changing the bylaws. We should not have industry voting. They have to be there under statute to provide technical and advisory information, and they should be there, but they should not be voting, they should not be chairing this committee. Thirdly, you need to tell this committee they need to provide packets of information to the public. They are required to ask for citizen input. How can you ask for citizen input when you never have any information until it's up on a little screen that didn't work half the time, and there's no opportunity for public input even offered? It's not even asked for. Right now, Jennifer's right, this is a rate approval board, pure and simple. It's a rate approval board. They don't ask for bids, they don't look at alternatives, they don't want any questions asked, they don't want any new ideas, they want to protect their business, pure and simple. So, you have a problem here, big time. And right now, I think you're in violation of statute, because they're not doing anything that they're supposed to be doing under O R S four fifty-nine dot three two five, and I will distribute this to you, save you the effort of looking it up. Thank you.
Well, that's nice of you, Margaret, to distribute it to us.
I always try to help you guys out, right?
Yeah, I didn't get any of it, you know, it's.
I won't have to make a lot of notes then.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm so crabby. I had some eye surgery, I can't see very well.
Thanks, Margaret.
I don't know, it's like.
How many think?
See well enough to be crabby.
Thank you.
But you have a valuable asset here, Jennifer, she always asks.
Thank you.
She always asks.
Okay, thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, the next one, and the last one is Liz Merlia Stein. Okay, the next one and the last one is Liz Merlia Stein. So Liz, come on, you can actually bring him up here if you want to, there's two chairs. And again, you know, name, name and address. Yeah, you can si- you can sit up there too. Oh, sit with Grandma, that's right, on the lap.
Have to leave it with me. Okay, I'd like to ditto what I just heard, by the way. Um, but I am here for another reason. I'm here to speak about my concerns regarding the employees that work incredibly hard to serve our county and to remind you that your leadership and your decisions not only impact their lives, but the lives of all of us in the county, including my grandchildren. And I must say that um, it would be wonderful if sometime you guys have meetings in the evening so I don't have to drag him with me, but that's okay. Um, and I do thank Commissioner Kula for, I mean, we have this wonderful Public Works building that's really close to my home and I just love going by and it's gorgeous. And I believe we'll have meetings there at some point. That's just what I heard.
Oh, really?
Okay.
I just understand if we could have it uh, with the open house, that's all.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm just hearing different things. Okay, the open house, I'm just excited for the open house. But it would be nice to have meetings.
He's bringing the gavel over.
It would be nice to have meetings in the evening, I'd appreciate that. Okay, so um, I read our local papers, I listen to recorded meetings and I especially take heart, I need my glasses, thank you. Um, take to heart conversations I have with many employees with whom I have a personal relation, relationship. And I want, I want you to know that many of us, even if we cannot make your meetings, pay attention to your actions and your decisions. There is concern about how um, how our money is spent and why there is such a high turnover rate of our public employees. I hear stories of single moms who work at front office, as front office staff and need to pick up part-time jobs just to make ends meet for their families, which is happening all over our country. Um, and also the rampant increase in housing costs. I'm very familiar with a lot of people going through that situation. People in HHS who I know personally speak about challenges with caseloads of close to a hundred clients because of constant turnover that cycles because of instability, which in turns goes back to underpaying highly educated and skilled employees. This impacts the people who look to the county for important services. And I'm really pleased, please start looking into this because it, it's, it's impacting all of us in our county. I know the stress this puts on people who I care about and still they continue to serve us because of how much they love and desire to serve their county, or to serve our community. Don't you feel that it is unfair not to give the same respect and treatment to, to our public employees as you do to administration? There are a lot of other concerning stories I hear and I felt a need to come today to speak up for the fair treatment of employees who serve us on the front line and deserve all of our respect and appreciation. I would ask that as you prepare the budget for this fiscal year or any other significant issues that might impact all employees, that you handle them with equality and integrity of what is right and just. I'm always speaking about justice, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the, all the cards I have for the public comment. Would anybody else like to speak on our public comment? Hearing none, then we'll move on to item number B, is which are consent agenda. Commissioners, on our consent agenda, we have, have approval of an amendment number one to the fee for services and that's between Yamhill County Health and Human Services and Trillium Family Services and that is our Board Order sixteen five thirteen. And that's to update the rate change for psychiatric treatment services and that's retroactive to January first of this year. Approval of a lease agreement between Yakima Valley Farm Workers Association and Yamhill County Health and Human Services for WIC program office space in the public health bill, building in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and one dollars and fifteen cents a month. And that's retroactive till October twenty-third, two thousand eighteen and goes until October twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three. Approval declared tax lot R three thirty-two five B C O three five zero zero. And that's a parcel of undeveloped real property acquired by the county through property tax foreclosure as surplus property and authorize the sale of the parcel to the city of Dundee, Oregon uh, for three thousand dollars plus fees and costs. Approval of a quote from GPEC Electric Contractors for installation of a generator at the county clerk's office in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. And then one letter, and that's approval of a letter of support and authorized use of the county logo for single coordinated care organization in our region. So that's our consent agenda and do we need to have anything pulled off the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing unanimous support for the consent agenda by Commissioner Kula, Commissioner Starrett and Commissioner Olson, the consent agenda is approved. That'll take us to old business and old business is a consideration of the adoption of our written findings and conditions to uphold the planning director's approval and denying the appeal of docket C three thirty-eight eighteen and S D R dash forty-four dash eighteen. Approval of conditional use and site design for a winery, tasting room and accessory uses as commercial activities in conjunction with farm use. And that's at ninety-five hundred Southeast Eola Hills Road, tax lot fifty-four twenty-six dash six oh one. And the applicant was Siler, Siler Varnum. So do you have anything you wanna say? So.
No, Mr. Chair, no changes were offered.
No changes were offered? So uh, we do have in your packet was the um, final ado- uh, the final written findings and conditions. So I will entertain a motion that we approve the um, the findings and the conditions to uphold the planning director's approval.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item C one.
And we have, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that um, it was approved unanimously by Councilors Kula, Councilors, uh, or Commissioner Kula, Commissioner Starrett and Commissioner Olson. Thank you, Todd, for getting that done.
Thank you, Todd.
That'll take us to item number D and its other business. And this is a consideration of increasing the local government investment funds and this the new L G I F investment limit to one million dol- one million dollars. I think we got a briefing that we're currently at, from my reading, we're currently at three hundred thousand dollars and this would allow for uh, I believe, moving that to one million dollars, but in increments of, and it won't be all at one time, it'd be in increments, I believe, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the rate of return right now on the uh, L G I F is, is very good, so. Any discussion on that item? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
One clarification, I think, I don't think it's local government investment fund. I think it's local government intermediate fund.
Intermediate fund.
So one correction. No, 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 it's written on.
Oh, yes, it's inter-.
I just wanted to clarify that for the motion that it's, it's.
The L G I P is the investment pool.
Pool.
Right, an intermediate fund.
Fund, correct.
Thank you for that correction. So we'll let the motion state that that correction is made, Ken. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, we, we will approve consideration of increasing local government intermediate funds, L G I F investment limit to one million dollars. And that was approved by Commissioner Kula, Commissioner Starrett, Commissioner Olson. Takes us to item number D two and this is consideration the adoption of the two thousand nineteen Yamhill County Transit Americans with Disability Plan. We got a uh, briefing and we acted on that, the Y C T A Board of Directors meeting this morning and recommended to the commission the adoption of the two thousand nineteen Yamhill County Transit Americans Disability Plan. So all those in favor sing- or I will entertain a motion?
A motion, uh, make a motion that we approve item D two.
Okay, we have a, have a motion, any questions? Hearing no que- questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, let it show it was unanimously approved by Commissioner Starrett, Kula and Olson. And that will take us to item number three and this is consideration of adopting resolution nineteen oh four eighteen dash one proclaiming May second, two thousand nineteen as National Day of Prayer. And I will find that resolution. It probably is the last one. Okay, I'll go ahead and uh, before we take action, I'll read the, I'll read the resolution. And this is in the matter of, of a resolution in support of National Day of Prayer, May second, two thousand nineteen. And it'll be Yamhill County Resolution nineteen dash oh four dash eighteen dash one. Whereas the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May each year as National Day of Prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas Congress has declared May second, two thousand nineteen as the official observance of the National Day of Prayer. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faiths to join in, uh, in united prayer to give thanks for blessings received, the request healing of wounds endured, to ask for guidance for our leaders and bring wholesome, wholeness to the United States and our citizens. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an opportunity for Americans to pray for what they feel is important for the city, the county, the state, the country and the world in total. And now therefore, the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May second, two thousand nineteen as National Day of Prayer to encourage citizens to join in prayer, asking for guidance and strength for our people and so lea- and our leaders so that they may meet the challenges that lie bef- for us with courage, wisdom and justice. And that's dated this eighteenth day of April, two thousand nineteen, Yamhill County Board of Commissioners, Commission Chair Richard L. Rick Olson, Commissioner Vice Chair Mary Starrett and Commissioner Casey Kula. So with that and the resolution being we- being read, I will accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item D three.
Okay, any more, any que- further questions? If, if not, we have motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let it show that the consideration of, or that the Board of Commissioners approved adopting Resolution nineteen oh four dash eighteen dash one unanimously proclaiming May second, two thousand nineteen as National Day of Prayer with Commissioner Starrett, Commissioners Kula and Commissioner Olson always, all voting in the affirmative. So that takes us on to our next item, which is public hearings and we have no public hearings. So that takes us on to announcements. Any announce- announcements, let's start with you, Mary.
Uh, just an update, uh, we still have our DHS bill, um, which might actually go back to the original version without amendments in light of the lo- lawsuit, the class action lawsuit. We feel that maybe our legislature, uh, our legislators will um, sort of have the impetus to uh, think in terms of, of making improvements that we are willing to suggest and carry out.
Good, thank you. Mary, anything else?
Uh, I think that's it.
That's a big one, that's a big one.
That is a big one, I know.
So Commissioner Kula.
Um, I um, uh, Liz Stein beat me to the announcement of, I was gonna say that about meeting at Public Works. That's.
We knew it was just an open house.
That's good. I did se- I did ask Public Works if they were, uh, if that was, it would be an effective way to get all three of us there. But um, you know, we can talk about that as it comes up. Um, but we had a wonderful um, uh, meeting, a joint meeting with um, the tribal council at Grand Rod yesterday. And I thought it was great to see how much common ground we have and how many areas we really want to work on together and frankly, need to work on together, so.
I'd just like to, my only announcement was as say, Casey mentioned the meeting yesterday with the tribal council. Uh, the tribal council, the new tribal council, which is a fairly young tribal council, has decided that it would be good to uh, start revigorating our quarterly meetings again. So we'll start having quarterly meetings with the um, the tribal coun- tribal council. Um, I suggested and it was, you know, a good idea from tribal council that at least every third quarter or something or on a regular schedule that they do the same thing, these quarterly meetings with Polk County Commissioners, that uh, that the tribal council, since we have so much in common in the Polk County Commissioners and the Yamhill County Commissioners, all get together like twice, twice a year at one, one of the um, events. And we all talk about our issues and how that affect the tribe, the Polk County and the Yamhill County. So I think they're gonna do that, do that. Uh, it was very nice to have our um, county administrator at the meeting yes- yesterday with tribal council, introduced himself to uh, to all the members of the tribal council that was there. And the tribal council says, thank you very much for the gifts that we presented the tribal council. So other than that, I don't have any else, yes?
There is an announcement from that, which is that um, they're scheduling a tour of their forest management practices for Friday, May tenth.
Is it May tenth?
All of us are invited in the afternoon, so.
Make sure Carrie knows so she can check in the calendar.
But we'll see her next Tuesday.
On Tuesday, we can get that on the calendar.
Yeah.
Do we have any else? Staff, Ken, you have anything?
No.
Nothing you would like to report? Well, we know what he's gonna report on, so I take it you don't have anything, anything that's county business that you would like to report on?
Uh, no.
No?
Someone wants an update on something else?
No, that's, I said county business. And since we don't have one of those three county athletic teams. Hearing more, no more, meeting adjourned.